Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City of Medea Beach Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November fifteenth, and the time is 5:00 PM. The City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Housh?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
I'm here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Poe?
First topic, topic discussion on parking rates, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you all coming in for the early workshop today. This was suggested to be put on the workshop by Commissioner Lister, so I'd like to hand the floor off to him. And then Vince has spent some pretty significant time on putting together what I think will be a very thorough presentation for you in regards to this. Commissioner Lister, don't let me step on your toes, but I believe there was a seminar given at some point in time about how Uber and Lyft and those types of entities will affect our parking rates and general purpose revenue, so to speak. So with that, I think Vince has got a presentation for you. I would very much suggest that no decision obviously will be made tonight, but I think we need to spend some time on this because I think it could get, not necessarily convoluted, but after having a conversation with the Finance Director this morning, we may want to, if you want to make adjustments, you may want to adjust just certain lots where some of the higher tourist, bigger money generators are, and so on and so forth. So I don't want to say too much and step on what Vince has got to present, but Commissioner Lister, I don't know if you have anything to open up the topic, otherwise we can hand it off to Vince.
I do, I just want to make sure that, you know, about a year ago, I guess, you know, we were handed materials about the percentage of our parking lots being full and turnover, you know, our shop owners are, there's a fine line where people decide that it's too much to park there. Or there's a fine line to where if somebody parks there all day, they're only going to buy so much stuff. So a turnover is actually a good thing. So a higher price is a good thing. So I'm just saying, why don't you try to find that material? If not, I'm sure the City Manager can dredge it back up, that says that about eighty-five percent is what we're looking for, for capacity, and that's on a good day, that's not at twelve o'clock midnight or anything like that. And, like, you know, there's other cities that are locally, they're raising their rates, and their services are not as good as mine. I just got back from Tennessee over the weekend, and I paid, you know, four fifty for two hours, and there was nobody in the lot, it was at the bottom of a bridge. So, you know, this is something that's coming, that municipalities have to do all the time, and I think we're at the low end of it, so I'm pushing to raise it, you know, I'm throwing my hat in the ring right now, that I think we should raise it, just because of the fact that I think more turnover is better for the businesses. Now again, that's going to be a hard sell, I think that's going to be a hard sell, some employees are going to be different, and maybe Vince has got some, and he always does, he always comes up with a magical way to make it good for everybody. So, you know, this could work for me, but again, I'm throwing my hat in the ring for a higher price, somewhere in the two fifty, three dollar range, so let me just stop there before I get too deep, and hand it over to Vince.
Okay, thanks. City Clerk is passing out some materials. Against my better judgment, I'm going to hand them out now, if you could just bear with me and try to, try to not get too caught up in those handouts just yet, there is quite a bit I want to get through. And it's really fascinating, I just kind of got, once I started looking into this, to me, it just became more and more interesting, and I think you all find it equally interesting. The fact is, parking revenue has very quickly become the second most important revenue source for the city. Since two thousand ten, fiscal year two thousand ten, the parking-related revenue has increased two hundred and sixteen percent, which sounds great, but it sounds even better when you look at the actual numbers. It went from six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in fiscal year ten to two point one million dollars in fiscal year sixteen.
Wow.
As you know, we have consistent rates all throughout the city, it's two dollars per hour at the moment, I shouldn't say at the moment, I should say for the current fiscal year, as of right now, unless any changes are made, it's two dollars per hour citywide. We do offer some benefits to residents and tourists, I should say longer-term tourists who stay in the motels and whatnot, they have access to non-resident parking permits, where they can buy a permit for a whole week and get a discounted rate rather than continue to pay the metered rate every day. And of course, our residents get the benefit of the free parking passes. So as Shane mentioned, you know, we did receive this request, so all the data that you have is based on that request. The memo that I wrote up in the agenda packets discusses approaching this decision from the context of the revenue policy. If you remember back in August, we went through the, a pretty deliberative process of adopting a formal revenue policy, and the intent of that was to make sure that we weren't making arbitrary decisions with respect to revenue items or individual fees, but that we would take a more comprehensive analytical approach to determine what the most competitive and reasonable approach is to establish the city's revenues. So with that in mind, I'm going to speak a little bit from the perspective of the policy, and this is the first time we've really made a decision like this or considered a decision like this from that perspective, so I think it'll be a good exercise for all of us. The first thing I would ask all the City Commissioners, not just Commissioner Lister, but if we are going to consider changing the rates, what's the ultimate goal that we're trying to achieve? You know, is it that we want to fund one of the projects that's currently unfunded in the CIP? You know, if it is, that's great, but there's some considerations we need to make there with respect to how we would go about financing it. For instance, we can't just pledge, you know, an additional increment of twenty-five cents of parking revenue for any type of debt financing, that's a weak credit, and we would have to come up with an alternative source. So just keep in mind, there's advantages and disadvantages to different types of financing approaches, and that's one thing to keep in mind if we're looking at trying to fund a specific project. The other thing I would mention in terms of trying to think about this from a goal perspective is what might be the impact on the mileage rate if we go forward with increasing the parking rate and all of a sudden revenue spikes? You might very well start to hear some questions about, you know, why are we not reducing the mileage rate when the parking rate is going, parking revenue is going up so quick? So you'll of course want to keep that in mind, you know, with respect to any kind of decision like this. And same thing there, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages to different types of revenues. If down the line, for instance, parking-related revenue became more important or equally important to property taxes, which were potentially approaching that dollar value, parking revenue is of course less stable than, I'm sorry, parking-related revenue is less stable than property taxes. So just some things to keep in mind, those may or may not be any goals that you have in mind, I have no idea, but I just wanted you to be aware of some of those types of thoughts. When we get into the guts of the policy, it starts to talk more about, you know, the actual criteria you should use to weigh any kind of pricing decision. So there are certain factors in the context of parking-related revenue that we should consider, and that quite frankly, we've seen the, we've seen the results of some of these factors over the last five years. For instance, the unexpected events like the BP oil spill, for instance, and how that may or may not impact folks' willingness to come to the beaches and what the impact is on parking-related revenue. There's plenty of unexpected things that could happen with respect to parking, you know, weather-related incidents, hurricanes, people could, for whatever reason, based on nothing that we control, just suddenly find themselves no longer going to the beach, you know, as much as they previously did. So, you know, being a beach community, those are the types of things we want to keep in mind. There's also bigger macro-level economic decisions, you know, you want to consider, for instance, the impact of tourism on parking-related revenue. At the moment, tourism in the county is fantastic, the mayor mentions those types of stats all the time, but just as an example, and I don't want to get too nerdy here with you, but the typical business cycle is sixty-eight months, we're currently eighty-nine months into the current business cycle, which, you know, depending on what your opinion is, what your economic philosophy is, may mean that harder times are closer than they are farther away. So, you know, you have to think about, well, what's the, what's the impact of macroeconomics on tourism, and what's the impact of tourism on parking-related revenue? Something that we haven't seen yet, but that I fully expected to see over the last couple of years, was the more we increase these rates at the parking lots, the more incentive there is for folks to go out and buy the non-resident parking permits, because it's basically a discount to get to secure longer-term parking without paying for the metered spaces. And I don't know why exactly we haven't seen that, but I would expect that if we do continue to increase the rates, that folks would be more incentivized to go buy a parking permit, and that may end up decreasing our actual parking-related revenue. We of course limit that, and it's not just open to anybody, we do enforce restrictions on that, but I just want you to be aware of that point as well. And then finally, and this is something that we've had tremendous success on over the last couple of years, but there's parking enforcement considerations. If you increase your parking rate to whatever the number is that folks may find unreasonable, you increase the odds that folks are basically going to make the decision that they're going to try their luck and maybe not pay the fee and take their chances with enforcement. And at the moment, we're patrolling that quite well, but that's just something to consider on the opposite side of the parking rate. And of course, there's, this is again from the policy, one thing the policy mentions is you want to go through the deliberative process of encouraging residents and get their feedback and determine what the public input is. And on that point, I think Commissioner Lister mentioned this, I think there are potentially different interests in the beach parking versus John's Pass parking, and not to speak for the business owners or anybody at John's Pass, but if your goal is to increase turnover, then you would likely want to have a higher hourly rate for parking, and the business owners may prefer that. The incentive at the beach parking lots is to consider something like maybe a daily pass where you encourage folks to maximize their time, but to not necessarily increase the hourly rate. So there's just some public considerations to keep in mind there, that the hourly rate may or may not be appropriate to be, may or may not be appropriate to have a constant rate throughout the city.
And Vince, if I can interject, Board of Commissioners, if you remember, the last time we raised the rate, the merchants in John's Pass were the ones that said, you know, you're pricing us right out of town, no one's going to come here because of the parking, so, versus Vince's philosophy, which I probably agree with, more turnover means more business, more money spent, so on and so forth, a lot of them don't see it that way. And so it's a split bag, if you will, down there in regards to the philosophy as whether or not the parking should be a dollar an hour or five dollars an hour based off of, you know, moving vehicles in and out of there. So just so you remember that, because it was, I think we remember seeing a restaurant server on the news saying, no one's going to come here because they have to pay two dollars an hour to park, and I won't get any tips and can't feed my family and that type of thing, so just something to consider.
So with that, we can turn to the handouts, and I want to give kudos to my staff for putting us in position to give you this information. You know, this information is, sometimes, you know, cities will go out and contract with consultants for this type of information, but we did this all in-house, and I think my staff deserves some credit for allowing us the opportunity to do that. The first sheet in your packet is a very comprehensive rate survey of all the currently, current fees charged by beach communities in Pinellas County. I think this virtually includes every parking lot that's on Gulf Boulevard, up and down the Pinellas County Gulf Boulevard coast. So what you see in that list is that the rates are all over the place. I mean, Clearwater, for instance, varies their rate, anywhere from fifty cents to three dollars an hour. Indian Rocks varies from a dollar to a dollar twenty-five. Treasure Island matches our rate at two dollars an hour. Sand Key Park is currently priced at five dollars per day, and that kind of speaks to the issue I was trying to get at with respect to the beach lots. That's an easy way to try to incentivize folks to just pay the five bucks rather than worry about how many hours they may or may not be at the beach that day. And more recently, St. Pete Beach has increased their rate from two dollars to two twenty-five an hour. So that survey is just for your consideration at this point, and with that, we can move on to the second, the second sheet in your packet, which provides some history on the last three years of actual data, complemented with the current year budget data. And what you'll see, I think, is pretty interesting, the paid hours that are in bold are really the most important data point, because, you know, what you do to the paid hours determines the revenue. So paid hours times a dollar equals X in revenue, paid hours times two dollars, you know, is twice the amount of revenue. So that's really the most important variable, and over the past three years, those hours have been virtually constant. I would note that last year, we saw a one point one percent reduction, that was the first reduction in hours we had seen in a while, and although there's plenty of reasons why that could have been, it could have been, we had tropical storms, we had Hurricane Hermine, we had plenty of events, but it's also very possible that it could be attributed to the increase from one fifty to two dollars per hour, just something for you to think about. The budget, what you see for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, the estimated paid hours includes about a six and a half percent reduction from previous actual experience. The reason for that is that in my recommendation, it's not prudent to budget for peak activity. In my recommendation, what we ought to be doing is discounting the parking revenue to account for the what-ifs, you know, I don't think we want to be budgeting assuming that we're going to continue to have peak activity, we want to at least be prepared for the possibility that some of these unexpected events may happen. So that's where that six and a half percent number comes from. And regardless of what we may or may not do to the rate, it would be my recommendation that we keep that same type of approach in the actual budget number. And with that, we can turn to what I was ultimately requested to provide, which was the parking revenue projections in twenty-five cent increments. So basically, what I've done is I provided projections at two twenty-five an hour, two fifty an hour, two seventy-five, and three dollars. I can't stress enough that these are of course estimates and projections, but what I've done is I've tried to account for a lot of the what-ifs by including for each of those increments, three different assumptions. A conservative assumption, what I call the baseline assumption, and a more aggressive assumption. So in the conservative model, we basically have planned for a reduction in hours of twelve point eight percent. What that, where that came from is I basically took the budgeted discount and I doubled it. The reason I did that is because we actually experienced that type of reduction in fiscal year two thousand seven. So I know Commissioner Lister likes to beat me up sometimes for being conservative, but in my opinion, that is not all that conservative, we did experience that at one point, and so I think it's totally appropriate to include that in the range. The baseline, as I mentioned, is about six and a half percent reduction from previous year actual experience, and that matches what we have included in the budget. And then finally, I have an aggressive assumption built in, which I don't recommend, but for your consideration, includes a one point one percent reduction in paid hours. And where I got that is based on last year's experience, as I mentioned, we did have a one point one percent reduction in hours last year. So if it turns out to be the case that for each twenty-five cent increment, we can, we see that experience, I wanted that to be included in the model. So with all of that said, basically, in very, very round numbers and in very, very rough estimate numbers, I can say that for each twenty-five cent increment, we could reasonably expect to see two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue per year. That is of course, assuming that there are no major macroeconomic issues, no major hurricanes, you know, basically assuming that the what-ifs are fairly limited in scope. My final recommendation to you along these lines is that even if we don't change the rate today or any time in this current fiscal year, I think it would be prudent to, we don't necessarily have to put it into a formal policy, but we should at least think about what I would call some type of contingency or reverse course policy. If for instance, the city ever did increase the rate to say two fifty an hour, I don't know, and it just turned out that folks went to Treasure Island instead, and we saw a significant reduction in our hours, we ought to be thinking about how do, you know, how do we respond to that, and how quickly do we respond to that? You know, this year, for instance, on my monthly reports, I tried to keep you all updated on the actual experience, because I wasn't sure what we would see when we went from a dollar fifty to two dollars, I was a little concerned that maybe we would see a reduction. So on my monthly reports, I tried to keep you informed, if we saw fluctuations, I tried to keep those, keep you updated on that. So for instance, I just think it would be prudent to try to keep in mind, okay, if we see a reduction of X percent, at what point do we maybe want to respond to that and drop the rate back, or at least be prepared to do that? So maybe there's no need to do it, who knows, maybe, you know, folks will keep coming regardless of what the rate is, but I at least wanted to throw that thought out there. And I know that's a lot, I tried to squeeze it into as short of a timeframe as I could, I apologize if I was talking quickly, but with all that said, I guess I would just request at this point that you review the data, I mean, it's a lot of information, and again, I think it's pretty fascinating. So take a look at it, and maybe we come back in a future meeting to address any of your concerns. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Finance Director, and actually, Commissioner Lister, I know that you're looking at one set number for the entire city, or maybe breaking it down to where our higher traveled areas like John's, Archibald Park being three dollars an hour, maybe John's Pass at two twenty-five, two fifty, the less traveled parking lots stay at two dollars an hour, to where we might be able to attract people into these lots, because you know John's Pass is going to be full. I mean, we see the tourism in there, it's hard getting a parking spot in there, I mean, I work down there every day, and I can tell you that place is packed, so I don't think you're going to see a big impact on that. And I think the City Manager's comments or the Finance Director's comments and yours, the turnover is, which the average person spends only four hours down there. I mean, so I think it's going to keep that kind of movement moving for the parking down there. Is that your thinking, or are you, like I said, are you looking at one solid price for the entire city?
Well, again, you know, this is my first information too, that Vince has given me. Personally, you know, I'm, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, I like a blanket approach, it's simply going to be easier as far as enforcement, it's going to be easier that, for, you know, the folks, not saying I'm trying to make Vince's life easy, I always try to make Vince hard, you know, I jump on him a lot. But that being said, you know, I was hoping to keep it across the board.
A flat rate across the board.
At two fifty. Again, you're not going to have anybody walk through that door that lives in Medea Beach, because they're not affected.
They park for free.
They're not affected. And the people that are going to be affected, you know, we'll listen and we'll hear them, but we should definitely have a, for lack of a better word, you know, a plan to retreat if that happens. But my question, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to get off the subject.
No.
I answered your question, at two fifty, I think we should stay consistent at two fifty. But it, I, I'm not sure this is a long-term thing, you know, gas is down, you know, people are driving more, I think you're, I think you're getting more tourists every year, so I'm not saying that this is going to be fifteen years down the road, this is going to help my grandson. I'm saying we have to, we have to strike while the iron is hot, it's, the fruit is ripe, we need to pick it. You know, we can always, like you said, we can always come back and say, whoops, sorry, I made a mistake, we need to run back two dollars or a dollar and a half or whatever. But right now, it is all time, best tourism we've ever had, this is, this is the time, and it's the season. I mean, January, February, March, there's a lot of businesses that make their year on those three lines, I mean, we can't, we can't bump this up in April when everybody goes home, that's not the time to bump it up, you know, and I'm, okay, I'm pushing it. You know, let's get it, let's get it done quickly if we're going to do it. Again, I'm twenty percent of the vote here, so I'm bringing it up because I think it's good, I personally was going to pay off debt with it, and that's just me, and I know you don't like to do that, I know that's probably not your best thing, but that's, you know, we can throw the money in the general fund, and then if it's, there's an excess at the end of the year, boom, we can pay off some debt with it. That's my, my goal is to pay off debt and to maybe put a few more machines around, you know, those machines are ten thousand dollars a pop, and the less I have to walk anywhere, I mean, that's better, it's better service. So, you know, we could, we could put a few more machines around, and I think personally, you know, we could have six at Archibald Park as opposed to two. You know, that's something we can, we can talk about, but two fifty, two point two increase, and I think the retreat line should be about twenty percent, if it falls twenty percent, it's, I've made a mistake, I apologize, let's turn around and go back. So if you guys want to put some numbers out like that, that's fantastic. Again, it's not a long-term goal, this isn't something that I think is going to ever be add to our tax money, it's never going to happen. And as a matter of fact, the more Uber and Lyft come in here, I think people are going to get dropped off at the beach and they're going to keep driving. So I'm, I'm strike while the iron is hot kind of guy, let's get it done now, because this may be our only time to do it. It may drop off like a lead balloon in five years, you know, autonomous cars, I mean, they're coming, they're in Pittsburgh right now, they, they, nobody drives them, so they don't need to park. You know, they've got a lot somewhere out, they've got a cell phone lot like the airport, they're going to go sit at, and nobody's going to, you know, come back and park at the beach. So the reason I'm doing it now is because I think the timing is perfect, and we are, you know, not in a lot of debt, we're in manageable debt, but this would help pay off debt. Again, I don't want to pigeonhole it, say, all right, everything that we make on this extra, you know, fifty cents is going to debt, I don't want to do that. I guess you go into the general fund, and then at the end of the year, if everything, no hurricane hits us, you know, nobody, nobody falls off the edge of the earth, we're, we can pay off debt, that would be a prudent thing to do, and I'm sure Vince would tell us that well in advance. But I just don't see, there's not a downside, well, I don't see a downside, of course, everybody says that, all optimists tell you, there's really not a downside to it. Nobody in Medea Beach is going to get hurt by it, everybody can still go to the beach and park. I think the, I think the whole thing about the different rates at different places is you're classifying people, you know, you're a little bit better than you, and you're not quite as good as them, and I'm never, never for that. And whatever I do in District Number Four, I'm doing for District Number One, because that's all of Medea Beach. So, you know, and again, again, I'm twenty percent, so I can certainly be outvoted, I just wanted to throw that out on the table, and, you know, if we're going to do it, we need to do it before the season gets.
And the reason I mentioned that, Commissioner Lister, is because I was kind of looking at Clearwater, how their different rates of well-traveled areas.
I'm not a Clearwater fan personally.
Well, I understand that, I understand that, but I mean, I've just kind of looked at their numbers and how they were rolling their numbers. And sure, as if we went to two fifty or two twenty-five, trust me, all the other municipalities would say, okay, Medea Beach did it, or if we saw Treasure Island do it, I'm sure we would do it, because.
Well, actually, St. Pete Beach just did it.
They just went up under.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's not the reason I'm doing it.
And as far as the tourism, you're right, it's there right now, I can tell you the numbers that we're getting from the TDC, we haven't seen that big drop-off that we normally see, you know, and then the big spikes. So it's almost consistent, the numbers are staying consistent in occupancy and hotels.
And numbers don't lie, Vince is right, we're in a cycle, sooner or later, it's going to drop off, it will drop off, and we'll just be prepared for that, and we'll drop our prices back twenty percent, we'll go back to two dollars. But until that, until it happens, don't, don't, don't stop, just keep walking forward until you see that cliff and then stop.
So you're saying two twenty-five is what the number you're throwing out there?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, okay. Commissioner Hodges?
I'm just curious, it's been a while, but what is the parking garage charging for parking?
You know, we did this huge survey, and I didn't survey Medea Beach, I just.
You know, we did this huge survey and I didn't survey Madeira Beach. I just, uh, I assumed all of our rates were two do- two dollars an hour and I don't have the parking garage rate. I'll have to get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'm in agreement, uh, with Commissioner Lester. I think we probably should raise our fees. If anything, that money can be spent for beautification. I mean, we really need to beautify and we have a beautiful, beautiful city and, uh, you know, we can spend a little more money beautifying the town and it would even attract more tourists. So when you have a beautiful place, people are, they don't mind going there and spending more money. So I'm, I'm for it. I think it's a good idea.
Anything else, Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Mr. Finance Director, you'll get those numbers to all of us as far as the parking garage and, uh, do we want to bring that up for consideration to possibly raise the, uh, rate to two fifty?
Yes.
Soon. Strike has the iron's hot. I thought you said strike. The iron's hot.
Yes.
Okay.
So let's just make sure we're all on the same page. At the next meeting, are you expecting to see a, an action item to, to increase the, the rate or you tell me what, what you're expecting?
I think I just got a consensus that two fifty would be acceptable to the commission to consider. So I think that, uh, and, and just please get, uh, everybody in Commissioner Hodges, which he requested, uh, far as the parking wage. And then at that time, we can discuss it. That way we're not sitting here for another meeting. We can put it on the agenda to consider. If we see something we don't want to like, we can not consider it or have it changed. Does that seem fair?
And I know it's a whole lot easier to change the machines to accept two fifty than, than, than the, than our fees and, and procedures. I know we're going to have to pass at least two ordinances to get this done. So that's two readings right there. So even if we do it next meeting, it's not going to happen until, uh, the fifteenth of, uh, or somewhere, second Tuesday in January.
Yeah, it probably won't go effective until February, March of two thousand and seventeen.
I was, I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's if we start soon, like today.
I, I wonder, um, you know, if you're, if you're going with the theme of strike while the iron's hot, I, I've never been a big fan and, uh, again, I'm, I'm thirty-nine years old, but I've been doing this for a long time. And I've never been a big fan of earmarking dollars like this for specific purposes because four years down the road, you're going to say, oh geez, I wish we would have not done that so we could use the money to pay off City Hall or...
We're not going to get anywhere.
Right. Uh, what I'm saying is though, we should have some sort of general idea that these would be the top three or four things that we would use with that general purpose revenue, which is exactly what it is. And so have that into the minutes so that we're not, you know, the, the community is going to come out and say, okay, you know, what's the next big toy that, you know, the public works department wants or something like that? That it, it would go for a purpose of, of alleviating debt or beautification or so on and so forth and then create a, a generic but big enough list, but certainly nothing that's going to say, okay, well now the, uh, city manager is going to get a new take-home car and the public works director will get a brand-new truck to take home and that type of thing. So that, because that's what we're going to get accused of. I mean, let's face it, we, we got a lot of scrutiny over this the last time around that we were going to run the tourists out of town. And I agree with everything that's been said here today. I think that it makes complete sense. But we have to tell the public what we're going to do with those dollars, at least in some, some fashion. Um, and maybe it's a, a play on both of them that it's just reserved for beautification, paying off debt. And there might be a couple more that you want to add to the list. But, um, it, it shouldn't be for, I, I shy away from capital projects to be quite honest with you, but that's something to give some thought to, um, um, coming up. So we can workshop it again in December, um, just so the board understands. And this is my recommendation. You guys can certainly do whatever you want, but the workshop would come in between, uh, Christmas and New Year's. So my suggestion was to have a very similar meeting in December like we were going to, like we're having today, the workshop at five and then the BOC at six. So we can workshop this again at five o'clock and, and have it ready for some sort of initial reading, uh, in December. Amy, if that gives us enough posting time to post the ordinance, correct?
If it's just a fee schedule change, that's a resolution, but I don't know, a resolution is one reading. I'm not sure if we, if it involves an ordinance as well.
Our, our fee schedule is not done by ordinance, it's by resolution?
By resolution.
Oh, then we, we'll have to have our city attorney check on that. We'll, we'll get a ruling on that, but it may only require one reading.
But January would be preferred because it's a large document.
But it's, it's a large document that staff also wants to have, um, o- other adjustments to. The other thing too is rewind yourself to last December. We were criticized for railroading through two zoning, uh, developments. And so December is a very touchy month to do anything and this is going to get publicity and then you're going to have people that are for it and against it. And so just be ready for those things. Um, but my suggestion would be let, let me report back to the board. Let me get with staff and see what I can get done. Let me find out if it's a resolution or an ordinance and then I'll respond to the board in a memo. So you know what's coming up in front of you in December. But basically, I think Vince and I both have our marching orders as to a draft an ordinance changing it to two dollars and fifty cents and then maybe coming up with some suggestive purposes for that additional revenue in the event that we hit a big...
That's good. I know. We've got a consensus to move forward with letting them draft something far as a discussion. Uh, you know, actually the Vice Mayor and the Commissioner Lester, you both hit on two, I think, because the Pope's always ahead. I made an extra house payment.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So that makes sense.
I think if, I don't like earmarking. I said that already. So, you know, I already said that. I don't want to earmark it, but I think that paying off debt's a great, a great thing. And then if you do have a capital project that you need to borrow money for, obviously your debt ceiling's lower than, and you can get more money, you know? And, and borrowing money now, it was a good time to do it. But, uh, in the future, it could be terrible to borrow money, you know? It could be a bad cycle.
And we've already heard that the Fed's thinking about raising the interest.
But it never hurts to pay off debt and it, it, it's never a bad idea to pay off debt.
Last thing real quick, uh, thanks to Mr. Marsakano here. We have the rates for the John's Pass Garage. One dollar for every thirty minutes, so two dollars per hour, same as ours. And that's a Monday through Sunday rate. Uh, they have another rate here, but I'm, I'm not exactly sure what they're getting at. So I can tell you that they're one dollar for every thirty minutes.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. I also want to just point out that the fee schedule itself is by resolution, but if you're going to put verbiage for earmarking or specific, that probably would be an ordinance or require two readings.
Right. So let's, let's just get back together as a staff. Let's, uh, let the city attorney take a look at what we want to do and we'll go from there and I'll let the board know probably sometime late next week as to how to proceed.
Thank you, Vince. Thank you, Commissioner, for hearing me out. Good job.
Thank you. All right, moving forward, uh, discussion on inviting Richard Gearing, is that correct?
Yes.
Planning and zoning administrator for Pasco County to discuss Madeira Beach development, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I feel that, um, you know, residents can have a better understanding of development, economic development, smart development. If we have a third party, um, among us who is as good as Richard Gearing. Uh, Richard Gearing lives in Dunedin. He's really a Pinellas County person, but Pasco County sort of picked him up and they were very smart about this. Uh, Richard Gearing, a few years back, if you guys know, and I know you've been around, uh, through, uh, Commissioner Seal, he was actually leading the American Assembly and Pinellas by Design. So Richard Gearing is a very, very big name, very well-known. He is very advanced. And I think if we have him here for an hour or two or half hour or whatever it takes to, to have him talk about future, about development and maybe answer some questions that public would have, then I think we would have a better understanding of selling, uh, any sort of a development to our citizens. You know, i- i- if we have been in development for a long time, we understand that commercial brings in the most taxed dollars to the city and they use a lot of, a lot less of our services. So it is very important to have restaurants, retail, things in that nature in our city, but also we have to have residential to sort of, uh, complement that. So we can't have businesses without having people purchasing things. So it's, it sort of goes hand in hand, but, but we have to be really understanding that, uh, you know, the more resident, uh, the more, uh, retail places we have, they become public. It's not, it's not really close to, close to public. For instance, if we develop a, a condominium complex, it is, it is pretty, that land is dedicated to those folks only. So, you know, i- in my personal opinion, throughout the years that I have done work, uh, the biggest industries always been, uh, you know, in cities, uh, mostly restaurants and hotels and, and retail. So, but, uh, I just want to ha- bring a better understanding of, of our development to our citizens and have them ask questions. Uh, I respect Mr. Gearing very, very much. And I think, uh, once you see him and you talk to him, if you don't know him already, you'll have that sort of admiration for him. So, um, if that's, uh, you know, acceptable by you folks, I would talk to him. He would be willing to come here at no charge. He's not charging anybody anything just to offer his, uh, his talent, his services to our, or residents.
Would this be a fifteen, twenty, thirty-minute presentation?
Um, I would say probably a little bit longer if, if possible for, for questions. You know, he could make...
No, I mean far as presentation.
Presentation, I'd say twenty minutes would be probably good.
Okay.
And I would like to invite all the public, anybody and everybody who is really caring about this city and is really interested in, in why the commission does what it does. Reach out to everybody and ask them to please come in that very night, ask all your questions, be very objective, ask as many questions as you want to. So you can get all, get all the answers.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, Commission, I know, uh, Mr. Gearing does have a great reputation and, and, and I know he's well-respected around the state of Florida. So I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean, I'm in favor to have a twenty-minute presentation.
Yeah, we'll be proud. You'd be really happy to hear him speak.
A consensus, though. Presentation and a workshop?
Information is always great, always great. I, I, I think the better informed you are for any decision, that, that's, that's wonderful. I'm, 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 my hesitation and I saw, I see you looking at me here, my hesitation is, uh, publics, uh, you know, we're, we're done. We, the, the city of Madeira Beach, we have no more developable land. I mean, we, 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 we've had all the parades and I mean the charades or, you know?
Yes.
Master plan. This is it. I mean, this, this was it. We don't have any more developable land unless we tear something else down. And, and right now, I don't think that's going to happen. The, the, the development that's going to happen in the city of Madeira Beach i- is, is private development. And if those two private developers, whoever owns that land, aren't here for questions and, and answers, we're going to get a skewed, skewed viewpoints open up. If, if, if the developers or if you want to try to get those people involved along with this gentleman to say, this is your, your, your path of least resistance and the best for the city, I'm, I'm really okay with that, but I, I don't see...
No, that's not the intent. The intent is to educate public to, to, and it's not about necessarily these...
These are, these are public lands right here. Then we're not going to change the, these. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know where, you know, planned developments yet. I understand planned developments. We, we have authority over those. We, we can change that. We can give, give other, we can give developers things that, that aren't in the, in the, you know, the, the code book. But if somebody wants to take the code book and build whatever they want to build, we don't have any, they, they just have to come to us for it. That's all they have to, they don't have to have our permission or our authority, anything that, that, that's in the code book. That, that's a, that's a buildable ideal. And of course, they're not going to ask us. If, if it's not outside those codes, they, they don't even come to us for, for advice.
Well, none of this was really code-related. It was a big economic development kind of advice. Has nothing, you know, I wasn't really thinking about anything except just bring education to our citizens. And, uh, you know, for any, any future projects, it, it has nothing to do, it may not have anything to do with these two developments, but it's more educational than anything else.
Is it showing where the pluses and minuses of losing development or where he has seen developments lost, where it has caused economic impact, where developments moved forward and it was a plus to the econ- I mean, is this what we're looking at?
Yes.
That's my understanding what you're saying, Mr. Vice Mayor, and need to kind of shorten it up.
Yes.
I think it's more of an educational thing, what he's seen and just kind of, I mean...
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before we go a little too far, uh, I had a chance to read up on the issue, um, and, and speak to, uh, one of the city attorneys working on this. Long story short, regardless of whether or not you're for or against development, the board has spoken and the board has approved the developments. If you look in a neighboring community, um, the city manager and the city is actually being sued for using city dollars and city time to educate the public on development. If you have been reading the papers lately, the other thing is, is that we have four pending lawsuits that everyone in the room for or against development is saying it's going to be way over our deductible for insurance. And so I'd be very, very cautious and concerned about what our reaction to this presentation would be. But I think just knowing that the players involved and I, I certainly don't want to get specific or, or worse in my own personal situation, any worse than it already has been. But the city of Treasure Island is getting sued for using dollars to educate the public on development. So handle that how you see fit, but I would be very, very careful with how you conduct yourself. And the fact of the matter is, again, you've spoken. Now you're defending yourselves in court and now you're going to educate or bring people in and spend taxpayer dollars and staff time and those types of things to do that? I, I, I lo- I lo- I love the sentiment. In fact, Vice Mayor, you and I spoke about it before, but the more that I gave it some thought and the more I, I talked to, uh, legal counsel, I'd be very, very cautious on this, at least throughout the holidays. That's the other thing. Remember last year, we were ridiculed. We almost got ran out of town because we were holding meetings in December and January over the holidays. So now we're going to do the educational part in the month of December or January where we got ridiculed for that. And again, that's not necessarily okay, uh, with at least the opposing group. And so I, I, I can live without another lawsuit, to be quite honest with you. So I'd certainly be skeptical and maybe just put this on the shelf until we can have a, a, a sit-down conversation with our insurance company, with our city attorney and those things because it is what it is. And, uh, again, I don't want to make light of a situation just south of us, but they're, they have a suit because, uh, they spend taxpayer dollars to educate people on development. That's flat out what it was.
Mr. Vice Mayor, do you mind getting with staff and then reporting back to the commission?
Yes.
After, uh, do you mind if the Vice Mayor is liaising on and talks to the city manager and commissioners and reports back to us?
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to, I spoke one-on-one with the Vice Mayor and this is coming completely out of the dark for him. So this is not his fault, but I didn't get a chance. That's why commission day is just always so hectic for, uh, me and staff. But I finally got a chance to sit down with legal and I just think we better take a real good look at it before. It, it sounds simple and it sounds like a great idea, but I think it's probably got more legal ramifications than anything else. And we just got to tread pretty carefully.
Do you want to pull that from the table right now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I apologize. I didn't get a chance to get to you.
That's all right.
Uh, next item number three, discussion on library board applications. Madam City Clerk.
Yes, we have been advertising for several months to fill the vacancy on the library board and we have received two applications, both of which are in your packet. Uh, you're welcome to discuss them however, and we can, I have the tabulation sheets to distribute at the meeting, at the regular meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you, you have, and Amy not to step on you. I know you're a little, a little bit shy when it comes to speaking on the floor. We have two very, very qualified applicants. Um, in fact, uh, we've been waiting, Amy, geez, it's probably been six months. Um, and so out of nowhere, we get two very, very qualified applicants. But the initial applicant, um, received an award and is going to be overseas for a certain amount of time, um, missing basically one half year's worth of library board committee meetings. Her suggestion was, well, and it, it sounds crass, but can I phone it in? Can I Skype in and participate over the internet? And although the world should be evolving that way, we, the bylaws for the library board don't allow for that. So you can only vote in, in person. The bylaws obviously can be changed, but I don't see that that would happen quickly, um, if you will. So we did get another qualified applicant and, um, I don't know if either one of them are in the audience tonight. Are you Karen? Karen, all right, nice to meet you. So Karen is here, the, the young lady who would be overseas. Again, i- if you looked at their applications, they're spectacular, um, very two qualified, uh, candidates. Um, but again, one, uh, unintentionally or unintentionally, I'm sorry, I just can't necessarily perform. Um, I, I think it's important that, you know, Madeira Beach be, um, represented and, and initially, especially since the seat's been vacated for so long. Um, and, and, uh, I, I guess there is no staff recommendation with this, but again, just be sure that if you, um, depending on how you vote, you'd be voting for a candidate that couldn't participate for about the first fifty percent of the, uh, the committee calendar year, I guess, Amy is probably the right way to say it. So with that, Mr. Mayor, now's the time if, uh, either one of the applicants are in the audience. Obviously, uh, Karen is, uh, now would be, uh, time to, if you want to have her...
I'll proceed, I think.
I don't see the other applicant.
Karen, would you like to say anything?
So if you...
Yeah. Yeah, yes ma'am.
Karen, if you would, you could come up to the podium. Um, the podium mic is touchy, you have to get it really, very, very close to your mouth, but please, uh, just state your name and address for, for the, um, board and the audience at home.
My name is Karen Miller.
Keep talking, Nick will hear us in the background, he'll get the mic on, it'll come on in a minute.
My name is Karen Miller, and I am a Madeira Beach resident, we have been so for about fifteen, sixteen years, a lifelong resident of Pinellas County, Florida. I'm over in the area of Jericho, I'm in age. Um, I'm an retired professor of Merida, I took years at college. Um, I grew up loving libraries, I was attending them as a child, um, as an English teacher, and then a literature and writing and film professor, I, uh, took my students there and always enjoyed and tried to instill in my students all the services our libraries have to offer here in Pinellas County, and I raised my son to enjoy the library, my granddaughter, and I just wanted to report my application, now that I am retired, I have the opportunity to, I hope, to, uh, work with the board and do something that I love, and make sure that-
We offer the kind of services that our, our residents of all ages would enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, can I ask you a quick question?
Right.
Are, are you gonna be available for the two-year term? Do you, barring any unforeseen circumstances, you, you would be able to make the meetings?
Yes, sir, uh-huh, yes.
Thank you.
Just to dovetail off that, Amy, how does the term work? Are we, are we already into a term that we're wasting time on, frankly?
Actually, all the terms for all of the offices, we've got them now so that they're always in an August, so it would be for about a year and a half.
Okay, so you're, okay.
It'll, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, then I guess, uh, we're gonna do the official-
You have to do the tabulation at the, the regular meeting.
Is there any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I would suggest is, just because, uh, I don't know if the other applicant was aware of the workshop meeting, it's up to you if you would like to give her, her time at the, at the-
I will, I'll see her come in, yes.
Um, but I don't know if she's attending, so.
Okay. All right, next discussion on county inspection agreements, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, I, I gave, uh, uh, Mr. DeSantis the night off, he, he had a, uh, wasn't feeling well, and he's at home watching, making sure I say the right thing tonight, but this is a very simple, uh, agreement with the county, I call it the get-hit-by-a-bus agreement, and it's if Frank is incapacitated for some reason or is unable to perform inspections, that we can contract with the county for a flat rate, I believe it's fifty-four dollars or fifty-two dollars, uh, per inspection, and that is a flat rate that the county has established with all the municipalities in Pinellas County. It's just, uh, pardon my French, a CYA-type, uh, agreement, and, uh, staff recommendations, obviously, for approval, um, in the event that, you know, Frank would, uh, retire or resign, there, there would be some, some overlap where we'd probably need some help from the county, or time where the city wants to contemplate either staying in the business, contracting and out, going through all those exercises that we've done before, of which I think we've all come to realize having our own hometown building officials the way to go, so, uh, long and short of it is, is that it's not an expenditure unless, uh, Frank is, for some reason, un- unable to perform his duties, and then we can contract with the county.
Commission, any questions?
Does that fee include the drive time and mileage?
Per inspection.
Flat fee. It's not a bad price.
Sounds pretty reasonable.
Yeah, it's almost a good measure.
Yes. Got consensus?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That'll be on the next, uh, agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, next item number five, debt schedule update.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can have- If I can have a floor, um, uh, under the debt schedule update, um, those, Vince and I took advantage of, um, prepaying some debt, and I, I wanted Vince to give you the specifics for it, because it's, it's good news, it does lend it to us a little bit in regards to spending, which is not a bad thing, um, but we took advantage and I believe saved about twelve thousand dollars in interest, if I'm not mistaken, so, uh, Vince, before I say something that's incorrect, I'll give the floor to you.
Thanks, I've got one last handout for you, sorry. We've only got a couple of minutes, so I'll keep this very quick, but, uh, yeah, we just wanted to give you an update on this, so each of the city's four outstanding debt obligations is unique with respect to prepayment options, among other things. The Series 2014 debt, which is the debt related to the Gulf Boulevard Undergrounding Project, allows for semi-annual prepayment without penalty. Um, that, of course, is entirely contingent on the schedule of the project, because the pledged revenue is the reimbursement funds we receive from Pinellas County after we pay construction costs. So, for instance, if, if the project costs are front-loaded and we've incurred, you know, uh, on a relative basis, quite a bit of cost compared to the project, then we're likely to be ahead of the debt service schedule, whereas if the project gets delayed, then we're gonna have to come up with some alternative, uh, payment mechanisms. But, uh, in the most recent fiscal year, we were ahead on the project schedule, because the initial costs for the project were indeed front-loaded, they were associated with heavy utility expenses, uh, to the major utility companies, and so we did exercise the, uh, prepayment option, it was the first prepayment option that we took advantage of, and we prepaid four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in debt service principal. Um, you have a schedule there that shows the prepayment savings, which is twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, but of course, we need to compare that to the forgone interest earnings that would have been accrued had we not chosen to prepay and invest the funds. The limit with respect to the Series 2014 debt is that I can only invest the proceeds for thirteen months. Um, so in this case, without getting too technical, I'll just tell you that that was not, uh, ideal from an investment standpoint. The forgone interest earnings were eleven thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is a net savings after the prepayment of one thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. So, with all that said, it's obviously good news, we're paying back debt ahead of schedule, uh, saving money not only on a gross basis, but also on a net basis, and I would just request at this point, um, I want, I wanna be sure the city manager's okay with this request, we haven't necessarily talked about this, but the nar- the, the window of opportunity to exercise prepayment options is fairly limited. Um, we had a, we had a one week, we had one week available to make that decision, and luckily, the bank was a little bit flexible in that, they could have very well, uh, turned down the opportunity to prepay, uh, based on the tight window of those dates, so if this is okay with the, uh, city attorney and, and city manager, to me, the, uh, the decision to prepay debt is, is just very similar to the decision to invest funds. For instance, I don't, I don't poll the board before I make an investment, but I do report back to you on my monthly statements, so if we can maybe get some type of consensus direction that if, in the future, we see a similar opportunity and it works out to a cost savings, that, that we just have that ability, uh, without needing to make any formal action, I would appreciate that, and then of course, uh, just like I always do, I would report that back to you on, on the, uh, monthly reports.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Director let me know of this opportunity, we, we weighed the pros and cons, and obviously, I, um, we contacted the city attorney as we do in, in any move, and he, uh, basically said it was the city manager's call. Uh, obviously, I think the prepayment of debt was a good idea, uh, saving twelve thousand dollars in interest, and so if we can just have a blanket approval to do that, so we report back to you, so we can handle the city's funds as, as, uh, fiscally responsible as possible, uh, that's, that certainly helps, we don't need your, uh, approval, but we'd certainly, uh, like the backing, obviously, of the, uh, city commission on that.
With your pleasure, Commissioner, yes.
Yes, absolutely, you're asking our permission to save money, obviously, yeah, that's good.
Thank you, Vince. All right, seeing no further business, or is there anything else any other commission would like to bring up?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the only thing, um, instead of keeping the next meeting going on later is just how you wanna handle the month of December, um, so the, the workshop falls right in that horrible time period between Christmas and, uh, New Year's. Uh, my suggestion is stick with the second Tuesday of the month and have a workshop at five o'clock or whatever, you know, time allotment we need, and then have the BOC at six and just take care of the month of December in one month. Usually, we don't have a meeting, but I think this month, we're obviously gonna have to have it. All right, and then, uh, Mr. Mayor, just for the good of everybody in the audience, for the six o'clock meeting, there's a tall handsome gentleman in the back there in a green shirt, Deputy Cregor, he's handing out cards for, uh, if you'd like to speak during public comment. You will not be allowed to speak if you do not fill out a card, so you have to get a card from him and hand it, hand it in to, uh, uh, City Clerk Servidi over there, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of minutes to-
Gotcha.
-stretch and get into our six o'clock meeting.
Was the consensus to have the meet workshop before the reading?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned at five fifty-eight P.M.
That you continue to bless and give wisdom to these citizens and this commission. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
Amen. And actually, uh, Chris Reese, I know you're a former Marine, and I would be honored if you would come to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
Thanks.
And happy birthday to the Marine Corps.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. All right, Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Poe?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion for approval for the provided minutes.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have approval, uh, a motion and a second, is there any additions or corrections?
Yes, there are, uh, they're in your, uh, dais log, there was a spelling error, the page numbers were missing, and we had one commissioner listed twice for voting, so those have all been corrected, so if you approve them as amended as they are in your, sorry, I'm out of breath, in your dais log.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the, uh, correction, corrected minutes.
I will amend my motion to include the corrected minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have one issue that we're gonna need to take off, but I'm gonna ask you to put it on the table, so we can take it off the table when, when time comes. Okay. It's under presentations and proclamations.
Okay. Is there any other discussion from the commission?
No comments.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
All right, next, appointments, library board appointment. Madam City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can jump in there for her. Is Judith Ann McGlaughlin in the audience? All right, so, Mr. Mayor, the, the second candidate, who was the candidate that was going to have to miss some time, um, isn't here. The one thing that we didn't bring up, and I believe, Mayor, it was your suggestion, and maybe the city clerk can contact her, is whether or not she'd like to serve as an alternate, we've done that in the past, um, but, uh, for the benefit of Commissioner Poe, um, Elaine, Judith Ann McGlaughlin was the first one to apply, um, but she has received a, a very prestigious award and will be overseas for about six months and won't be able to attend like half of the committee meeting minutes, and then we have a young lady in the audience, I'm sorry, Karen, your last name?
Miller.
Miller, there you go, I'm sorry, there's a, it's quite a, uh, Karen Miller is in the audience, she was our second applicant, but she can, um, uh, begin, uh, serving immediately, and so that's, that's what we saw at the last meeting, so, Mr. Mayor, the floor is now yours.
Okay, I believe everybody's passing in their vote now.
I'm not sure what I'm voting on.
It's the-
Library Board reporter?
Appointment to the library board?
Get each of you your packet.
I couldn't get my packet to open.
Okay.
Not unusual, plus I did not get it until late Monday evening, so what am I voting on?
Uh, it's-
The library board appointment.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And Ms. Miller gave a presentation at the, uh, workshop, and, uh, Ms. Judith Ann's not here.
Okay. I think we can use that one.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
And I'm gonna go ahead and keep moving forward, Madam City Clerk, and just when we get done to the next, end of the next presentation, we'll go ahead and let you make that announcement. Next, uh, presentations, we have donations from the seafood festival.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, sorry to interject, but that is the one that we'd like a motion to put onto the table.
Okay.
Um, Sonny Flynn is here in the audience, uh, Sonny was the coordinator and the organizer, she definitely deserves kudos or a round of applause, she definitely, um, I think had a very successful seafood fest, and she hit the, uh, um, numbers she wanted to hit in terms of population. Um, they're always very good about taking care of the city and making donations, but as the bills continue to come on in, obviously, they need to assess their financials before they can do that, so we were a little presumptuous, hoping to maybe get our donation a little early this year, but, uh, we'll just put that on the table and take it off the table, uh, when, when she notifies the city, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Flynn, you're in the audience, if you'd please come to the podium. I just wanna have you recognized, uh, the seafood festival, I think, uh, three years ago, we were having numbers around sixty thousand, and this, uh, year before, last year, I think we were somewhere around a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, tell, please, tell us where we were about this year.
Uh, our guesstimate, actually, our numbers, based on, uh, the sheriff's department and our people counters throughout John's Pass was two hundred and eighty-six thousand in four days.
And also, also, I wanna give you kudos, 'cause I know you worked with, uh, other municipalities, I know you worked with the ferry system, and I know normally, traffic on Gulf Boulevard coming into Madeira Beach during the seafood festival was sixty thousand, was crazy. I work in John's Pass and went to work all four days, and only noticed congestion around exactly in front of John's Pass, so kudos for working with the other municipalities and, uh, the new modes of transportation. and, uh, the new modes of transportation out there to get people in and out. You know, I can't say enough for also, uh, working with the CBB. I believe you got in the last two years somewhere close to a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in, a hundred and four, excuse me, a hundred and forty thousand dollars in grants. So outstanding job, keep up the good work. Thank you very much from the city of Madeira Beach.
I have the total.
Okay.
Karen Miller. You are nominated. And I believe that the city attorney is prepared to swear her in.
Okay. Madam Miller, would you please join the city attorney at the podium?
Do you write, please write, raise your red pen? I, Karen L. Miller.
I, Karen L. Miller.
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
The Charter and the Code of Ordinances.
The Charter and the Code of Ordinances.
Of the city of Madeira Beach.
Of the city of Madeira Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
As a member of the Library Board...
As a member of the Library Board.
For the city of Madeira Beach.
For the city of Madeira Beach.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
In the manner provided by law.
In the manner provided by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything, Ms. Miller?
Mr. Mayor, just so we can have it on the record, that then the city clerk will inform the Library Director of the appointment, and we'll get the, uh, hopefully get her a couple of months of minutes and get her caught up on where, up to speed, and we've now got all of our boards filled and ready to go.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All right, next dedication of commission chambers. Fire Chief Darryl O'Neal, would you please escort Madam Mayor Pat Shonst to the podium? Now, Pat, if I can do this with dry eyes, it'll be amazing. Madam Mayor, during your fifty-plus years here in Madeira Beach, you have owned and operated three restaurants, held leadership roles in the Old Salt Fish and Organization, the Pinellas Planning Council, the Madeira Beach Chamber of Commerce, the Johns Pass Merchants Association, and the Gulf Beaches Rotary Club, where you have served as the first female president of both the state and local chapters. You have also been a member of the Madeira Beach Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, and also the chairperson of the nine eleven Ad Hoc Committee, and was instrumental in creating the nine eleven memorial that you see here in Madeira Beach today. Thank you. You were elected and served five terms as a Commissioner of the city of Madeira Beach, beginning in nineteen seventy-three. God, Pat, I hate to tell you, old I was in seventy-three. God love you.
Trust me, we don't want to know.
She was also elected mayor of Madeira Beach and served as such from March twenty-fifth, two thousand and eight, until March twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, through one of the hardest times this country and this city ever faced. In two thousand and thirteen, returned to the city commission for one last term. Vice Mayor Shonst resigned from the Board of Commissioners in June of two thousand and sixteen for personal reasons. The city of Madeira Beach, its residents owe a debt of gratitude to you, Madam Mayor, for your love, dedication, and time to our great city. And the people that live here, we are forever grateful for all that you have done for our beautiful city. Madam Mayor, the city would like at this time to honor you by dedicating its new commission chambers to you. Stand fast. Well, I know it is not, you shouldn't do this, but Madam Mayor, would you please take the chair and give us a few words?
You're welcome.
Good evening to all of you. What do you say after something like this? I probably haven't done enough for Madeira Beach after I say this. I'll have to get hot on some project, we gotta think of something to do to make our city more beautiful than it is. Of course, we do have a lot of things we could be doing, and I always look around to see where I might be able to help, do whatever I can for this community. I've lived here so long that I've become part of it, and I tell you, I love this city. I've been through ups and downs and ins and outs and aroundabouts, but you know what, folks, in the end, I love my community and my city. My husband used to think I was absolutely crazy. Don't you do that, Patricia, but I did it anyway, with his blessing always at the end. He thought it was all right. But anyway, what do you say to wonderful people who came from Treasure Island, from the city of Madeira Beach, from all neighborhoods around, to honor this situation and honor me? I tell you, I'm really flabbergasted, it's beautiful, and what else do you say? It's been a great trip, it's been a wonderful life. I've worked very hard here in this town, not only for the community, but for myself. And if you want to do anything special, you have to work really hard, and so I guess that's how I received this wonderful, wonderful honor to be Patricia Shonst's commission chamber. So I would say to all of you, I'll send you home with much happiness, much love for each other, respect for each other, remember, we do nothing by ourselves, everything is done together. With that little message, I'll tell you all good night. And I can't believe I didn't cry, I was really scared I would.
Once again, Madam Mayor, thank you very much from the city of Madeira Beach.
Absolutely.
Next, public comment. This section is reserved for public comments on matters or concern pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Madam City Clerk?
Sam Baker?
My name is Sam Baker, I'm at seven forty-two Pruitt Drive, been here for twenty-six years, and a small group of us have assembled to try to discuss a recent paper that was issued to the city called "Madeira Beach in Turmoil." We have a paper which we'll read from, and it's intended to present the citizen's side of the story on items in that paper. I'll just begin to read. Last week, a professional delivery service distributed a scurrilous paper with the heading "Madeira Beach in Turmoil." This paper purported to be authored by a group identifying themselves as concerned Madeira Beach citizens, who are apparently too timid to name themselves or too ashamed of the accusations and false narratives in the report. A large number of citizens, over a thousand voters of Madeira Beach, have united to oppose two extreme development proposals in the center of the city, which do not conform to existing land use and zoning laws, and which threaten to overwhelm the city with traffic. Our city manager and four of the five elected commissioners have sided with the developers. One commissioner, Elaine Poe, sided with the majority citizens and has opposed these developments from the beginning. The "Madeira Beach in Turmoil" paper contains a wholesale, brutal, and essentially false personal attack on Commissioner Poe. Mrs. Poe has not only stood by her own opinion of these excessive developments, she has backed the wishes of most of the citizens who also oppose them. In addition, she dared to report ethics violations admitted publicly by her subordinate employee, the city manager, to the International City Managers Association, ICMA for short. As a result of her report and an investigation by ICMA, the city manager was expelled and censured with no recourse after a hearing in Kansas City this summer. More about this later. I'll rest.
Jerry Klyat?
My name is Jerry Klyat, I live at, um, one four zero four oh Marguerite Drive, Madeira Beach, and I will finish the letter in defense of the attack of Mrs. Poe. Much of the remainder of Madeira Beach in turmoil is a purile, inaccurate, and frankly boring resuscitation of various perceived grievances imagined by the city manager against him personally, the city, and other commissioners. None of it is true. It concludes by requesting Commissioner Poe's resignation at the next BOC meeting, which is tonight. The united citizens of this city back Commissioner Poe all the way, and we reject all the falsehoods and innuendo in this paper. We may even suggest Mrs. Poe run for mayor in the next election in March. What are you afraid of? The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees freedom of speech and the right of citizens to petition their government for redress of grievances. That may be true throughout the rest of the United States, but it is a right denied here in Madeira Beach. In June this year, a petition committee formed in accordance with the Madeira Beach City Charter delivered a petition to place a vote on the next ballot to block the ordinance that enables the proposed major developments in the city center. Signed by one thousand seventy-three persons, the Pinellas County Board of Elections certified nine hundred and eighty-seven of these signatures, which was more than twenty-five percent of the number of registered voters at the previous election as required. Using an ancient two thousand and seven misinterpretation of its own city charter, and at variance with current Florida law, the petition was declared insufficient and went to limbo and now sits in waiting for adjudication. The petition is now in litigation, but the ordinance is blocked, and the developers will have to proceed at their own risk until the petition is settled.
Nancy Briner?
Nancy Briner, three sixty-four hundred and forty-fourth Avenue. I'm gonna continue reading where Jerry left off. What is the city afraid of? Are you afraid the voters will uphold the petition? That is probably a good guess. Last March, when the city placed a misleading-worded referendum on the ballot, which would have turned authority to sell city land from the voters to the commission, our united group rallied a hurry-up door-to-door pamphlet campaigning to oppose the referendum, and we bettered the city by two to one in votes. Very decisive. Look what just happened last week in Treasure Island, after finally waking up, their voters squashed a referenda that would have permitted more extravagant buildings in their city. A majority of Madeira Beach citizens feel the same way. City officials claim that we are anti-development. That is absolutely false. What we are opposed to are the multi-high-rise developments that are on the table now. On the contrary, we welcome development, but in accordance with the existing land use and zoning described in the city's special area plan. We have even listened to scaled-down versions of one of the proposed developments, and we hope there may be some headway in modifying the original plans. "Madeira Beach in Turmoil," the letter that was sent out, ends by describing Madeira Beach as a dated nineteen fifties beach community with problems, crime, drugs, and prostitution. The reality is that Madeira Beach is a residential community on a very small island with about four, forty-three hundred residents, three thousand nine seventy-six single-family dwellings, over six hundred and fifty veterans, and two hundred and thirty-six businesses. It has a full mile of beaches, excellent schools, a major entertainment center at the south end, and many bars and restaurants along Gulf Boulevard, and a fair amount of public parking for beach access visitors. Thanks so much to Commissioner Elaine Poe. Increased police coverage and suitable ordinance, the crime referred earlier, has been greatly reduced. crime referred earlier, has been greatly reduced. According to published police reports, total crime has diminished slowly since 2010 and remain the average for small U.S. cities. We like Madeira Beach the way it is. It's a residential city, not a tourist magnet. We welcome modest development, particularly in the city center, which is rundown and outdated. But we do not want any concrete canyons or traffic problems like those that has paralyzed Clearwater Beach. Thank you."
Hang on, Madam City Clerk. I think the city manager had an announcement from the city attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. In regards to the lawsuit, in regards to the petition, I received an email from our attorney today stating Shane, this case involves the plaintiff seeking to have the court determine that the petitions for referendum found to be insufficient by the city were in fact sufficient. I filed a motion to dismiss stating that the plaintiff's failed to state a cause of action for declaratory relief. Judge Newton granted the motion to dismiss with prejudice. The case is now concluded.
Proceed, Madam City Clerk.
Ronnie Blackwood.
Bill Gay, 423-150th Avenue, here in Madeira Beach. I want to allude to some of the things that Sam Baker said about the ICMA expulsion of Shane Crawford from ICMA for violating several of its ethics tenets. I'd like to extend beyond that because I have questions about the amount of money Shane charged the city, billed the city for his attendance at the ICMA meeting in Kansas City. Looks like it was a business trip and also very much a social trip for Mr. Crawford. The concern I have is that the city is paying for this trip, which has nothing to do with city business. This was purely a personal decision on Shane's part to challenge his expulsion from ICMA. There's no requirement that Shane maintain a membership in ICMA for his job here in Madeira Beach. This was done for his personal benefit. All trips expenses as a result of that should have been disallowed. But let's see what Shane did when he went to Kansas City. He spent three nights in Kansas City for a very short meeting on Friday afternoon. He billed the city for three nights of housing there: Wednesday night, Thursday night, and Friday night. He booked, he billed the city $1,000, over $1,000 for hotel expenses for himself and his companion. He stayed in a luxury hotel at $346 a night rather than the Hampton Inn, which goes for about $129, $20 a night. He charged the city $26 for mileage to and from the airport here in Tampa, in spite of the fact that he has a car allowance. He charged the city $140,000 in transportation to and from the Kansas City Airport for himself and his companion. Total costs for his trip there were $1,500. This trip was social on the front end, little bit of business on Friday, and social on the back end. Because his plan was, and what he did carry out to do, was to attend the Green Bay Packer game in Wisconsin.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know where any part of that is relevant. If we can just stick to the facts, I appreciate it. My personal life's got nothing to do with this guy or what I do here.
Let me finish up on one other thing here. Crawford's lawyer also billed the city for about $6,000 for that visit.
Mr. Mayor, it's not my personal attorney. That's the city attorney. I'm sorry, this is not relevant. It's not my personal attorney. It's the city's attorney.
Well, I'm not sure why the city attorney is being used to, you know, provide service to you.
There's not going to be bantering back and forth, neither one. So, city business only, please.
Okay, let me finish up. So, what we have is a bill here for about seven, over $7,000, nearly $8,000 for these expenses up to Kansas City from the lawyer and also from Shane. The city has some really extreme problems with its budgets going forward, and this is going to contribute to that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add that the attorney's fees was approved by the city commission. If the city commission wants me to reimburse them for the three wonderful days I had in Kansas City, I'd be happy to write that check before I go home tonight. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk.
Evelyn Page.
Hi, everybody. I'm very interested in what happens in Madeira Beach. I live here now, and we've done several developments here. And I'm hearing from this, these people coming in, all they're doing is conjuring up problems because they're dissatisfied because they didn't get their way. I say, when I was in Indian Shores, we had people like that. I formed a group, Property Owners Association, which was so powerful, we were able to get rid of all of them because we knew who to vote for and who not to. People that are so negative, complaining about somebody going on a mini-trip for business. Oh, it could be pleasure. Maybe you should have gone along with them and taped it. All I can say, this is a wonderful, wonderful town, and we have the best commission, the best mayor, and the best city manager. We don't need this crap. I think you all should stop it, especially you, Elaine. I think you're the culprit in the whole thing. Thank you very much.
Steve Page.
Hello, Steve Page. Of course, we developed the Marriott Courtyard. Just what strikes me about the leadership in this town, because I've been here a long time trying to develop something, and I think that sign up there says it all. It's first class. I mean, it's very impressive. This whole town's becoming first class. These chambers, the library, the Publix, the Marriott. I don't, what I see here I've seen before in other towns. I've developed all along the beaches, and I've seen it in groups get together, Indian Rock Beach, for example. I developed many condos there. Then they voted in to have a supermajority vote. Do you know how many developments I did after that? Zero. Almost all development came to a stop. Treasure Island invited me to their commission, or maybe it was the Development Board or something, to understand why I won't develop in that town. Because I had told the Development Director I wouldn't, and that's because of the referendum-type procedure you had to go through. It just shuts development down. You guys have something phenomenal going on in this town. You're between, to me, it's St. Pete Beach, Clearwater Beach, and in the jewel, right in the center, is Madeira. This place is fantastic. There's no canyons. And I want to add one thing. I remember when I came before this board to get approval for the Marriott, one of the biggest discussions was the traffic from people checking out of the hotel. Well, I actually dropped someone off at Madeira Beach fundamental quite a few times a week, and the people coming out of the Marriott, I have never seen one. Not one. And that people don't check out in 30 cars in a row. They just don't. So, this traffic and stuff can all be managed, and I'm for, you know, smart developments. And I'll tell you what, this is a smart group you have up here. They're not easy to deal with. They're tough, but they're smart. They respect you, and it's really one of the best towns to develop in, and I hope you stay on that path. If you don't, and you want to shut development down, look around you at some of the other towns.
Hang on, Madam City Clerk. And I just want to bring one thing. The city manager, when he was requested to go up to do this, it was a three-day, they did not give him any single day that his hearing was going to be held, so he had to be there all three days till the hearing was held. So, I know that for a fact. Probably it was there for three days.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to say what happened. I had a pre-planned trip to Wisconsin to meet with my family and, yes, go to the Packer game, which I think they might have even won. I don't even remember. But the point of it is, is that I had to detour myself to go defend myself against the ICMA after five individuals who I asked permission to do something gave me permission and then was sabotaged by one who I think it's awfully convenient. She gets to leave, and I have to sit up here and take the arrows. So, call it what you want, audience. I mean, it's obvious what's going on. And I thought that that was just a bit too much. So, yeah, you're damn right. I went and defended myself, and I didn't go in there saying, "I'm sorry." I said, "I didn't break any of your tenants," which I still maintain, and so does my attorney. So, when you're up here throwing arrows, you better watch out because it's called slander.
All right, Mr. City Manager. Why don't you go and stop there? And trust me, if you want to be mayor, you don't get to walk out when you don't get, do you, Pat? You don't walk out when you don't hear. If you hear something you don't like, you don't stand up and walk out.
What happened? Where did she go?
She's gone. She left. She heard something she didn't like.
Did she talk to the city clerk?
In commission. She didn't ask to be excused.
Did she talk to you before she left?
She did not ask to be excused.
And what was her reason for leaving?
She heard something she didn't like, from what I saw.
That's what you thought. But she didn't give any reason for leaving.
Yeah. She did not ask to be excused.
Is she sick? Does anybody know why she left? Is she sick? She needed to talk to the city clerk before she just walked out, folks. I...
There's rules.
Seriously? That's not right. Come on. I apologize to you for that type of behavior. I really do. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Commissioner. Madam City Clerk.
Ginger Tolliver.
That's all I can say. Elaine, I'm going to preface this by saying you were too chicken to sit there last meeting when I spoke, and you're too chicken again tonight.
Madam, we need to keep it to city business.
Okay. All right. I'm here for two reasons tonight: to show my strong support for Shane Crawford and to ask Commissioner Poe to tender her resignation effective immediately. By her own admission, she is not a team player and does not play by the rules. Elaine, you have stated that you were going after Shane. I'm going after him. This is my city. He works for me. And you did. You filed an ethics complaint with the IMC. This was a complete turnaround after you stood in my hall on several occasions and told me how wonderful Shane was. That was when you had your way. What, and what an asset he was to the city. Why did you change and become so vehement? Only you know the real reason. Was it because you did not get your way on developmental issues? Is it why you want to pick up your toys and go home because you didn't get your way? Is it that you were dead-set on vehemently attacking Shane and ruining his reputation and his personal relations? Elaine, you are the disgrace to this city. Please resign. As I stated at the last meeting, you are the, you were too chicken to show up for. I once felt that you were what this city needed. I called you a shitshaker, excuse me. I felt you would shake things up and get us out of the dark ages. Well, you did. But you know what? That shit came back to soil you. You have become too hostile. You are a disgrace to this city. You epitomize the old saying, "One rotten apple spoils the barrel." You need to resign so we don't lose the best thing this city's ever had. If I were Shane, I'd pick up my toys and go to another city that appreciated me. But that's not Shane. He has too much character for that. And I think that, there she goes again. Just take my toys and go home.
My name's Christopher Reese. I'm here tonight, not necessarily to defend Shane. I respect these people. I really do. And the fact that they come out, we all got a right to our opinion. I went to Wawa's on Veterans Day. More people showed up than I knew from here to get coffee than they did to complain about Shane. Maybe you should give something away. I don't know. But we're here tonight. Elaine's not here. Every night, I've never been here on a night she's here. If you guys quit, one of y'all leaves, how do you get anything done? I mean, honestly. But, yeah, you can leave. But seriously, you're on a witch hunt for this guy. You're getting on to him about, what, the bill? Well, you know what? If somebody from the city hadn't hung him out in the dry, he wouldn't be there. So, you know what? I'd build the damn city too. I mean, seriously, the heartache, the headache he goes through. I mean, think about it. You guys, you know, where were you when Hillary Clinton was getting prosecuted? Oh, my God. Don't get up, walk out, finish the deal like you're doing here. It's true. We needed you. Believe the guy alone. Seriously.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, city manager, and staff. My name's Jim Everett, 15458 First Street East. And again, I like to talk about accomplishments. I think the measure of a man or a woman in their position is based on what they've accomplished in their position, based on what they've been asked to do. I don't think it's a matter of, do we ask the city manager whether he wears boxers or briefs, which is kind of what we're down to here. Who cares? Here's what's done. New city hall, Rock Park, Archibald Park improvements, Snack Shack revitalization, Marina upgrades and improvements, beautification of Gulf Boulevard, new Marriott, new Publix, new developments on the beach, Eco Village, bearing of utilities on Gulf Boulevard are being done, the Boca Seega repaving project with pervious concrete, leading-edge technology right here in our city, sliced pizza, new water taxi service, the new beach concessions at Archibald Park, the new developments that we're trying to get done here in the city eventually. And the lawsuit that was referred to repeatedly was dismissed yesterday, so I'm not really sure why that's even a point. Thank you.
And Mr. Everett, one thing you left out about all those projects was how much grant money he was able to get to accomplish those grant parlors. The road project happened, which I believe is over $2 million. I think altogether in grants that I've seen from this, from this staff and the city manager is well over $4 million. So, Mr. City Manager, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam City Clerk.
Robin Beloski.
Thank you. It's nice to see you again. My name is Robin Beloski. I live at 118-131st Ave. here in Madeira Beach. And I originally came tonight, my first reason for coming, was to speak on, I'm new here. I've lived here just over a year, and I was very pleased to be appointed to Planning Commission, but I was a very active volunteer in the seafood festival, partly because my street is right near John's Pass, but it enables me to get to know people. And I was so impressed at all of the work that goes into that. What a way to show our city. I was called often. My husband was called often because we walked over and kept volunteering. What a way to show off our city. And believe me, I talked to people about why I lived here. Bill and I looked at cities when we wanted to retire, all the way from St. Pete Beach up to Clearwater, and we chose Madeira Beach. My husband's an engineer. Does that tell you anymore? We looked at every single aspect of cities. This is such a wonderful place to live. And it does, I wish people could just put aside their grievances right now, and let's all move forward. I just sit here as a newcomer and listen to a lot of this. I would also like to say to commission, thank you for your service. I served on a county commission for nine years. I know what goes into serving on, as an elected official. You work countless, countless hours, and I think if people are that upset, why don't they run for office? Why aren't they sitting up here and serving like you do? I would like to thank all of you for your courage and your commitment to Madeira Beach, and I hope to be more actively involved. The seafood festival, please, let's keep doing it every year because it's just, kudos to us to show off. And I knew there were that many people because they were there, but the sheriff's department, everybody cooperated so effectively. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure Sonny would like to hear that volunteering. Thank you. And it was. It was outstanding. And I, that has to, and probably Sonny will give me the numbers, but I know that at that point, we were the largest seafood festival in the state of Florida. largest seafood festival in the state of Florida, the third-largest in the country. Are we number one in the country now?
We're number one in the country.
That's what I was looking for, the bragging rights song. Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Ken Slice.
Hi, y'all. I'm not here to jump on the Shane Crawford bandwagon, but I just want to tell my story real quick. My partner and I run a great business down in Indian Rocks, a lot of fun building a community. And Shane came into our business a few times for food, and really understands what works well in Madeira and what doesn't work well. I don't know how many people he passes up on before he recommends them, but he saw us, liked what we did, and pursued us heavily, and said, "This is perfect for our town." So, he's not running a game here, he's looking for things that work, in my opinion, and I think it's a great fit for us, and we're thrilled that he saw our potential and he chose us, and he's the reason we came here, and, yes, we're gonna open very soon. Thank you.
Bye, next one. Thanks.
My name is Randy Gunning, and I own property at 13655 Gulf Boulevard. I've owned property, residential, commercial businesses in Madeira Beach since 1996. I've been here for 20 years. And I have to say that I believe that this board, and even some of the past boards, the commissioners, the city managers, this is the absolute best without question. And I'd like to really say, you know, the big thing about tonight is really it's in honor of, to me, of Elaine, I mean, of Pat Shance. And I think we really need to give her a big round of applause again, because she's been... The recognition for Commissioner Hodge and Lister and Mayor Palladino, and I'm not familiar with the new Commissioner, and it's just a shame that Elaine Poe isn't here, but I know everybody's worked very hard to get this community to where it's at. It's a shame that we've had one rogue person that has tried to disrupt the apple cart. I think Shane Crawford has done an awesome job, and I've got to know Shane Crawford over the last year, year and a half, very well, and same with Travis. I wish I knew the other commissioners better, but this is an awesome community, and we should be proud to be part of it. We're very proud of the work that you have done, and having groups and organizations that have their own agenda, it's too bad, it happens all the time, and you can... They call themselves a majority, but they're not, they're a minority. There's a couple of loud ones, but the thing about it is, you have the facts, you know what the facts are, the twisted facts and things that go along with, that bring up all of these disturbances or issues. It's a shame, because it costs the city more money, more time, and those types of things, and it's just a shame that that has to happen. And lastly, I would really like to say that I think that Pat Shance is the absolute best.
Run for mayor, Pat.
Been there, done this.
I'm City Clerk.
I have no more cards.
Okay, closing public comment. Next consent agenda, none, contracts and agreements. Contract number one, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, do we want to just take a sixty-second?
Okay.
If there's anybody in the audience that wants to...
Take a five-minute, ten-minute recess.
Five minutes.
Let's rock and roll.
Pat, you want to stay? I don't think it's gonna take long.
I would suggest to everybody, we're gonna have twenty minutes to a meeting left. If you want to dart out now, now's the time to dart.
Pat, sit for the show, come on. I'll leave and let you run it, for old time's sake. We'll make you the mayor for the evening, how about that? Honorary mayor for the evening. Oh, you'll have to do public comment, look on the bright side.
Yeah, really.
If you don't like what they say, leave. We reconvene at 7:06. All right, next contract and agreements, contract for law enforcement services with Pinellas County. Before I entertain a motion, Mr. City Managers, any comments from staff?
No, this matches the budget, this contract is minus one CPO, so just so that you're doing the deputy math, or I think Deputy Craigor's in the audience tonight. We used to have Deputy Craigor, Deputy Luckett, of which we're gonna handle in December, I know you're gonna ask the question before you ask it, and we had Deputy Coleman. I wrote Deputy Coleman's position, working with the short-term rentals, out of the budget, and then Deputy Luckett got promoted to a different position, so, nothing against Chris Coleman, I love the guy to death, but that position had somewhat expired in my eyes, so I replaced, if you... I guess if you want to think about bodies, I replaced Deputy Luckett with Deputy Coleman. Deputy Coleman and Deputy Craigor tag-team, if you will, both short-term rentals and co-enforcement and all other police-related things, it's been working fantastically, and it saves the city, Vince, help me out, maybe about a buck and a quarter, about $125,000.
Okay. And before I entertain a motion, one more thing on Deputy Luckett. Can we make sure, is there any way we could get...
Yeah, we got that all figured out. So, we've got a bunch of people coming, Deputy Craigor recommended that we have Deputy Luckett Day, so we'll have a...
Little proclamation?
Actually, you're gonna present him a key to the city, and during... Actually, you're going to present him a key to the city, and during your presentation, declare that that day, only this year, is Deputy Luckett Day, of which the day will almost be over, and Craigor can kind of rub it in his face.
But we can't make it look like a handcuff key.
Right, right.
All right.
We've got it all figured out, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for the law enforcement services with Pinellas County.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next contract, interlocal inspection agreement between Pinellas County and the city of Madera Beach. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Staff, I know we went over this once, but for the record, you want to just go ahead?
This was just discussed at a previous workshop. This is CYA, in case our billing inspector can't do inspections. Staff recommendation is for approval. Madam City Clerk, I know you have a private engagement to get to sooner than later. We've got staff in the audience that can make copies. I know the mayor's leaving for a week-long trip at 5:00 in the morning tomorrow, so we need to get his signatures tonight. So if, Ms. McGrady, if there's copies that need to be made, or anything that you can help Amy out with, so we can get the signatures?
The city attorney has all the copies, all the ones to be signed.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Mayor, before you split tonight, we've got to get your signature on a couple pieces of paper. Again, interlocal inspection agreement for Pinellas County, staff recommendations for approval.
And that was one flat fee?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right, next ordinance 2016-11. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
This is a reading of ordinance 2016-11. A third and final reading of an ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, amending in its entirety, entirety, Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinances, relating to flood damage prevention and flood hazard management, adopting floodplain management regulations, providing for the regulations to be known as the Floodplain Management Ordinance, establishing minimum requirements in conjunction with the Florida Building Code to minimize public and private losses due to flooding through the regulation of development in flood hazard areas. Adopting definitions, adopting flood insurance rate maps to serve as the minimum basis for establishing flood hazard areas, providing for specific standards for A zones, A zones and V zones, including a two-feet of freeboard above the base flood elevation, providing for the designation within flood hazard areas, providing for variances and appeals to be heard by special magistrate, providing regulation for violation of the Floodplain Management Ordinance, providing for terms not defined by the Floodplain Management Ordinance or the Florida Building Code, adopting local administrative amendments to the Florida Building Code, and providing for an effective date.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we pass ordinance 2016-11 on third and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. City Manager, imagine, Ms. Ordinance. Any comments from staff?
Unless we have a correction, this is the third and final reading, and staff recommendations for approval.
I do want to make one correction. There was a change. I read, including a two-feet of freeboard, that was taken out by the state.
Tell them in my motion to exclude that?
Do I have a second on the amended?
Second.
Yeah, the second amended motion. And, Ms. Ordinance, I want to thank you very much for all your hard work on this, because I know that when you look at the federal level, federal really does nothing to help for flood insurance, and this helps with flood insurance rates. I think that puts us helping the residents somewhere between 18% to 20% under flood insurance, and hopefully increasing our CRS numbers, giving us better CRS numbers.
We hope so.
Okay, thank you very much for all your hard work. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, what do we mean by variances and appeals? What sort of variances and appeals would be asking?
We would prefer never to have a variance on floodplain management, but we must allow that, because everyone is able to ask for a variance, and so we need to put that into our ordinance.
When you say variances, you mean like from the two-feet freeboard?
Correct. Or, for example, we did have a variance approved at the Marriott, because they needed their restrooms on, you know, on grade, and so they did apply for a variance, and that was approved for them to do that. So there are different items that can be requested for a variance, and it goes to this special magistrate, just like any other variance that the city has. We don't recommend them.
Yeah, I don't...
I think that was a perfect example when you gave the Marriott, and I think you remember that, when they were asking for the restroom to be down on the ground.
Yes, I certainly do, but ultimately, you know, our variances have to be consistent with FEMA.
Correct.
So we can't, you know, we can't modify FEMA regulations.
No, but the magistrate wouldn't. I mean, we'd stay consistent with that, so...
And the two-feet is just merely for our insurance rate. So it's okay to maybe, for instances like that, to reduce the two-feet to zero? Is that sort of a?
And, we would prefer not to, but we have to put in the variance information into our ordinance. It would be a fight on someone's, if they're requesting a variance to the two-feet, more than likely, it would not be approved. But anyone can ask for anything, I mean, if you want to ask for a variance. And so we have to allow that process to go through. And FEMA is the one, I did work with the state, the Department of Emergency Management, on this ordinance. And they were the ones that said, you need to include this, you need to take this out, you need to include this. So everything was done according to the state and according to FEMA.
I think it'd be far-fetched, I think it's just trying to catch those, the minimalist-type ones, where, you know, it's so small, but you still need to go through a process. We're just allowing for that process to exist.
It's a basic due process procedure.
Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Next ordinance 2016-12. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Ordinance 2016-12, an ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, amending Section 82-2 of the Code of Ordinances to revise the definition of condo hotel, and providing for an effective date.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 2016-12.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this has been discussed exhaustingly at the planning commission level, as well as at your level, and staff recommendations for final approval.
Is there any further comments from the commission?
I do have a question. What do we, what do we really mean by revising the definition?
You remember the conversation about having a centralized reservation system? Michelle, roll me out with the other specifics.
We took this to the planning commission, and they requested that we remove the word "central" reservation system, and we did. Another one was, the city attorney requested that we remove the word "an occupational license" with a business tax receipt, which we have done. During the last Board of Commission meeting, they requested that the... Providing, however, that any owner's stay can no longer, or can be no longer than 30 consecutive days, and separated by not less than 60 days. The Board of Commissioners requested that we remove that also. So that was removed. So, everything that you have on the ordinance you're looking at has all of those changes that Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners, and staff recommended approval.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, I think what we were doing was trying to give authority back to the owner, at least in the slightest bit, for them to have some sort of, freedom's probably the wrong word, but it, freedom, if you will, to, A, use their unit as they see fit, and B, manage it as they see fit, instead of having a centralized reservation system. You know, nowadays, with the internet, you can do Airbnb and handle some of those things on your own. It's there if you want to use it, but you don't have to. So it just gave owners a little more freedom and options.
Thank you.
Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Next ordinance 2016-15. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, calling for a general municipal election on March 14, 2017, for the purpose of electing a commissioner for District 3, a commissioner for District 4, and a mayor, providing authorization for the city clerk to sign contract with the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections, providing for publication, authorizing election expenditures, identifying the Pinellas County canvassing board as the canvassing board for the March 14, 2017 election, authorizing for a runoff election, if necessary, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 2016-15.
It's like watching ping pong, really.
Well, since, I figure since I'm going to be, you know, I probably shouldn't be seconding it.
I'll second it, so I can talk about it. I second it.
Go ahead.
But, you know, we talked about it seven, eight years ago, you know. Why aren't we moving back to November? I mean, it costs the city 12, $15,000 to have an election.
Yeah.
If we pump it to November, it's caused the city nothing.
Yeah.
I don't understand why we're doing this, you know. Every March, we have 800 people come out and vote. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. We always try to save money. This man over here sweats, day and night, to save money, and we throw it out the window just because we won't have a March election. Doesn't make any sense, I'm just saying.
I just wanted to let you know that there are costs involved, no matter when you have it.
Not as much, not nearly as much.
I don't, I don't have those numbers.
Okay.
But in the future, Commissioner Lister, for lack, we can put it on a workshop and get all the numbers.
It would have to be amended in the charter.
Mr. Mayor, I put it on a workshop before, we've discussed it.
It would have to be a charter amendment.
We discussed it, and I've discussed it, and I've discussed it, and, you know, I'm done.
I mean, we've already done a first reading, we should have done the first reading, and that conversation's at the second reading.
Just to let's get some order back to the meeting, you guys can discuss it all you want, but it would require a charter amendment.
Charter referendum.
Go to referendum.
And who's going to vote against not saving money?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying there's nothing that we can do tonight.
Tell me you don't want to save money, I want to hear that.
Understood, but there's nothing that we can do tonight to change the March election. Now, if, do we want to workshop it? We can workshop it and get it on.
Mr. City Manager, I agree with you totally, I just, I, again, I just wanted to talk about it. I'm talking.
But see, that's, that's the problem, and, you know, the problem with the audience, too, is sometimes it's like they just want to talk about it, and then we don't take any action. So, next March, we'll be in the exact same boat. So if we want to put it on the next workshop, let's discuss that, and so we can do that.
I think it's a great idea, Commissioner.
I couldn't agree more.
It's a December workshop, it's in the middle of the, you know...
Well, why don't we table it to a January workshop?
Let's put it on February or March, we'll catch the elections happening, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Very good, February.
Madam City Clerk, can you pencil something in, February?
That would work for me, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Because it couldn't be on the ballot probably until the following March.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
No.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Next ordinance 2016-16. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
This is an ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, repealing Chapter 74, Vehicles for Hire, and providing for an effective date hereof. This is the second and final reading.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that this commission pass ordinance 2016-16 on second and final reading, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
First and second, I know this was something that the city clerk brought up, but, Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments from staff?
Obviously, the recommendations for approval. There was some rhetoric going around in town that somehow this benefited me financially, and it's just not the case. We never regulated taxi cabs, we don't want to get into the business. Dave doesn't have time to check the airbags on any cab walking into town, that type of thing. So it's just a part of code that we never use, and Amy's just trying to clean the books, that's all of us.
Well, Green Bay Packers ever show up in town, then I might have a question.
I've never heard of the Packers so much in a Florida city commission in my life.
Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
All right, new business, waiver of bid requirements, wa, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for waiver of bid requirements for the purchase of dumpsters from Parcan.
I so moved, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
Yeah, and commission members, if we can get the motion in the second on, then I can walk you through some of these. They're, they're very easy. Waiver of bid requirements, we don't bid out our dumpsters, because we need them all to be the same type, so we can interchange parts, very simple. You're completely within your right to do so. We're asking for a bid, waiver for that, and then, item B is to go ahead and spend $21,800 on some new dumpsters.
Okay, so I need the motion amended for A and B, I'm sorry.
No, no, you don't separate, you're correct.
Okay, I thought you wanted to separate them or put them together.
You do want to separate them, so you need a motion to waive it, and then a motion for expenditure.
Okay.
My motion is to waive, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from the commission?
No comment.
Is there any further comments from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Authorization of expenditures, authorization of expenditures to Parcan for the purchase of dumpsters in the amount of $21,886.20.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that this commission pass the authorization of expenditures to Parcan for the purchase of dumpsters in the amount of $21,886.20.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff?
Recommendations for approval.
Is there any further comments? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Next, authorization of expenditures, authorization of expenditures in the amount of $237,653 for a Peterbilt garbage truck in accordance with Florida Sheriff's Association's contract number F, excuse me, FSA 16-VEL24.0.
I'll make the motion for the authorization of expenditures for $237,653. Continue, for the Peterbilt garbage truck.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and, Mr. City Manager, comments from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And explain why we're looking at this, and how it affects tipping fees and things like that.
I certainly will. So, if you look at number items, number two and three, you're authorizing an expenditure, and then we're going to ask you to increase that expenditure by $40,000. And, much like my extravagant trip to Kansas City, Dave wants to upgrade his garbage truck, and it's not for heated seats or air conditioning, it's for a bigger-capacity-type truck. So we're going to go from a 27-yard truck to a 32-yard truck, which obviously decreases the amount of trips. Also, Dave was mentioning to me in the, at our break, that over the weekend, we don't have, you can't store garbage. And so we got to be able to have that capacity to go, on the weekends especially, and get that truck dumped. So we're asking for a $237,653 expenditure, and then an additional $40,000. And, Mr. Vice Mayor, this is something I'm sure you're used to, but when there's already a state, or like in this case, a Sheriff's Association contract, you do not have to bid it out, you can buy it off the state bid, because in essence, it's already been bid out. So that's what we're following, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the commission?
No comment.
And the only thing I'd like to say is, Dave, good thinking on that one, saving tipping fees. I know that we had the discussion before, doing recycling saves us a lot of trips to the, to the landfill, which also saves on tipping fees, so, you know, and I think in the long run, this is going to pay off for itself. So thank you very much for your work on that. Is there any further comment?
Mr. Mayor, just be aware that if you approve number two, we're asking you to approve number three.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
All right, next, Resolution 2016-29, amended in the fiscal year 2017 budget by increasing sanitation funding expenditures in the amount of $40,000, and providing for an effective date. At this time, I'll entertain the motion.
I make a motion, this commission pass Resolution 2016-29, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second. Comments from staff, I believe we just covered it, but if you'd like to...
Recommendation for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments from the commission?
No comments, sir.
Dave, once again, thank you very much for thinking outside the box on that one. Is there, Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
All right, next, Resolution 2016-30. And, Mr. City Attorney, I'll let you actually read it by title only, Jim, take your job.
This is a resolution of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2016 budget by decreasing general fund revenue in the amount of $50,000, amending the fiscal year 2017 budget by increasing general fund revenue in the amount of $50,000, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Before I entertain a motion, Mr. City Manager, would you like to find the answer directly? Do you go ahead and explain what that is?
Yeah, give a floor of events on that one, please, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This is just rolling grant revenue forward from one fiscal year to the next. At the last meeting, we did this for several capital projects, and now we're doing it for the landscaping, the median landscaping project... And now we're doing it for the landscaping, the median landscaping project with FDOT. We're just rescheduling the grant revenue corresponding to that project. There's no net impact to fund balance.
So basically, we're taking, gotten so much grant money last year, we're rolling it over into the next year.
Then the amount doesn't change. It's just changing the actual schedule of it.
Thank you, Mr. Finance Director. At this time, I will entertain a motion for resolution 2016-30.
I'll make the motion to pass resolution 2016-30.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments from the commission?
No comments, sir.
Any further comments from the audience? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, next reports and correspondence. I'd like to go and report. I received a very, very nice letter from the Madera Beach Social Club thanking the commission and the city of Madera Beach and the $2,000 contribution we made to the Madera Beach Social Club. I can say nothing but great things about that group of women, mainly made up of widowed, widowed women. But there's a few men in there and I'll tell you, I'm envious of them because being two or three guys with 300 women, you know, what a job that is. So congratulations to the city of Madera Beach. Commission should be proud because those women, you know, how they work together and take care of each other with our seniors here at Madera Beach is outstanding. So thank you very much. Any other commissioners have any reports or correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we had a very productive meeting with DOT and Pinellas County today. Everything went really well. And we'll be hearing from them pretty soon.
Excellent. And I'm sorry, I did want to bring up one thing. I know we're trying to all get out of here. I wanted to thank Congressman Jolly publicly. He was here on Saturday at the American Allegion Post 273 Boat Parade. And I want to thank him publicly for his service and what he has done for not only Pinellas County, but Madera Beach and his support. So Congressman Jolly, if you're out there, thank you very much, sir. Mr. City Attorney?
No further reports from the city attorney.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Very quickly, Amy, I know you're trying to get out of here. The meeting today with FDOT, very, very effective. I think the vice mayor did a good job. He and I sat down and kind of discussed how policy setting and administration goes. And I think he and I are on the same page. We got some very good news today. In fact, years ago, mayor, I think it was even the old commission, asked Dave and I to get rid of that flashing beacon at the, what streets are those? Here on Municipal Avenue or Municipal Drive? 153rd. So I don't want to say they go slower than we do, but this time they did. But we did get it. So we're going to have an actual stop, stoplight there that will definitely clean up that, that intersection. And the days of the glowing dark flags are gone. So they said that you can... I'll have one if you want to take one. Otherwise, the tourists will probably take them back to Wisconsin. Madam Clerk, if you can make a note, I need a copy of tonight's minutes and highlighting the names of anybody that discussed the word city manager Shane or Shane Crawford during the public comment period for my attorney. I think those, that just happened within the first seven speakers. Thirdly, if, I'm pretty much done putting anything into a public document. So if any of the commissioners would like to know about my unbelievable trip to Kansas City, I'd be happy to fill you in. I don't know what Green Bay Packers had to do with it, but I'll be happy to, I'll let you know. But I, I hope you see the position that I'm kind of being cornered into. And you've had a city manager that sued you before, and I don't want to be that guy. But, I mean, we saw what happened tonight. I've been nothing but sabotaged, and this is ridiculous. We all know what happened and how it went down. And I got to defend myself somehow. And you can't hide from Google. And I'm having a hard time with that. I think people see through that. But when you're trying to get recruited, when you're 55 years old and you're done with Madera Beach, this is going to come up. And you can't justify that from the state of Florida to Arizona. So I, I'm on my third attorney, interviewing them to see what I should and shouldn't do. All of them want me to take action against the city of Madera Beach, which is my employer, which I don't want to do. But frankly, I was sabotaged by my employer. I know that has nothing to do with you all, but it's true. So I'll do what I can. But, and I'm sorry if, you know, A, I took anything away from the work we did tonight or from Madam Shont's evening tonight. But I can't just sit there and take that. That was completely, again, it had nothing to do with city business whatsoever. And so I'm not going to stand for it any longer. I've kind of hit my boiling point. But again, I don't want to be the city manager that sues his own employer. But this is, it's getting ridiculous. I mean, my personal life's got nothing to do with what we conduct here. It's the city and it was approved by my, universally by my bosses. So if she wants to maintain that she didn't do that, that's not true. And it's been witnessed. And she'd have to sign an affidavit saying that, which would be perjury. So that's between her and her God at this point. But something's going to happen. I just don't know what it is. So I'll let you all know. But hopefully, it just simmers away. It'd be nice just to come to work, to work. But this is, this is getting a bit silly. And I know I brought some of it on myself. I made that life decision. But I didn't do anything illegal and got the permission of my five bosses to do so. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Madam City Clerk?
It's already been advertised, but I just wanted to let everybody know that qualifying begins December the 14th through January the 13th. And it's also posted on the website, so if anybody...
I'm sorry, what was the date again?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, what was the date again?
December the 14th through January the 13th.
Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:33 PM.